The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois. Alderman Johnson.
Alderman Ramkassun.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum's present.
Approval minutes?
June 7th, 2022.
I have a motion by Mr. Massey, seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
I have an application from 119 Wickham Avenue for a waiver of the commercial use of the first floor.
Okay, so forward that to legislation?
Got it.
All right. And for the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward.
Uh huh. Good evening, council, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Dave Madden, I am the director of the Run For Downtown, you're gonna be speaking about that later this evening, just wanted to send a little message out to everybody here in the community, 16th Annual Run For Downtown will be taking place August 20th, 2022, we anticipate 700, 800 people running, walking a four-mile course that circumnavigates our fair city, returning back downtown for the Equilibrium Brewery post-race party. It's a great morning, I hope I see you all out there, we always need sponsors, we always need volunteers, but most of all, we just want people to be out there participating. Four miles, it's a, it's a distance that most people can handle, be it run, be it walk, be it crawl, be it whatever it is, and I'd love to see you all out there, so, August 20th, 2022, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Eileen, do we have anybody online?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you, moving over to the mayor's remarks.
Good evening, hope everyone enjoyed the fireworks at Davich Park this past Saturday, I know Jerry supplied the Economic Development Office with a lot of pictures, so for those who say, "Does Jerry really take pictures of those cameras?", it's true, I know that's a Massey comment, Jerry, and he did supply them, and they're beautiful photos, and we thank you for, for providing them. Also, the, um, we had a ribbon cutting yesterday that I'm gonna address at the next meeting for 33 Fulton Street, software companies relocating here, and as soon as we get more details, I can provide to the public, and some photos, we'd like to provide them to the council at the next meeting, but it was well attended, and, and I think the public will be very impressed with what will be going in that building. But the issue of the night is gonna be the, the CDM Smith response for Dulcetown Road, and we did file with the way we had the planning board, our comments on the Dulcetown corridor, the draft and generic environmental impact statement, within the next day or two, we will provide it online on our website, it's a detailed report, eight-page report provided by CDM Smith, just to give you the categories that we addressed, were storm water, water and wastewater, traffic, the natural resources, threatened and endangered species, and solid waste. So, this report is, the cover letter is supported with a commentary list of exhibits, all will be provided for the public to review, and I guess we will maintain CDM Smith as our engineers commenting on this project as it moves forward. So, other than that, I hope everyone had a pleasant fourth, and just to address the fireworks issue, I'll leave that to the chief to give you details on that, but I believe it was a little bit better than previous years, but still, we did have many people violating the, our city ordinance in regards to the fire, using not only, you know, fireworks, but also some late at night, which are really inappropriate, and, but I'll let the chief give you the details on that, so, any questions?
Any question for the mayor?
Okay.
All right, thank you, mayor. The department heads, Economic Development?
Good evening, everyone, as Dave mentioned, the Run For Downtown, it's Run Rock Roll Weekend, so, with that said, Jefferson Starship is playing August 19th at the Paramount Theater, and Run For Downtown is the next day, and right now, the first 100 participants who sign up by July 15th are entered to win tickets to the concert, so, it's a great collaboration and partnership with the, with the Run, and we're looking forward to that weekend. Tonight, on the agenda, there's some resolution, the annual action plan for our department to submit to HUD, it needs approval to submit, and for the mayor to sign all the appropriate documents, and also, our office is preparing two consolidated funding applications, for, one for the Paramount Theater, and one for the Middletown Community Campus for strategic plan, so, we need your support of, on those as well, and that's all I have for tonight, if anybody has any questions.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. So, as you can see, lots of our capital projects are moving along, to start with, is the traffic operations here, you can see the progress in downtown, almost every sidewalk and curb has been dug up and is being replaced, and getting ready to install new traffic lights, and we're having a lot of difficulties in there, it's not really an easy project, all the, mostly, all of the proposed locations where the traffic lights, pedestrian crossing, poles, and everything, has gotta go, it has to be shifted around in order to, in order to make accommodation for the underground buried utilities, or basements, or, or existing foundation, or existing pipes that nobody knew about, so, it is difficult project, because it's a tight, old city, and, and, but it's moving along, and work is being done outside downtown as well, and, you know, in Ridge Street and East Main, and that's almost completed, not the traffic light itself, not the intersection itself, but the curbs and sidewalks up Ridge Street, the work is nice, but it's, 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 it's difficult, but it's moving along. We did not forget about the, the landscape and the tree planting, and we are considering right now whether the city will do it in-house, or make it part of the project, so that's still out there for us to decide. WSP have done a follow-up design, and they suggested certain type of trees and certain spacing, which we will be pursuing, and we'll see what's the best way to do it, so that we cut the expenses down of the project. The milling and paving, it's, it's moving along very well, too, at, at scheduled rate, and now, we're doing, we're working in Randall Heights, we're done with the first ward, we're doing the second ward now, then we go to the third and the fourth wards for the milling and paving, and again, like the mayor said the last time, it's about $2 million milling and paving operation, and that is using the, the state funding, it's not, it's not city funding. And before you, there is another, there is a resolution tonight, to approve establishing New York Touring Routes, they call it, where the state has given us $1.3 million for last year, and another $1.3 million for this year, it'll be a total of $2.6 million for milling and paving and infrastructure work in, in the state, in the city streets, so, so hopefully tonight you'll approve it, and then we'll have the money allocated, we're gonna be spending about $1.5 million of that money for the milling and paving that's taking place now in the city. And with that, before you, there are several, several resolutions, also for DPW, for annual supplies for our chemicals, for the water treatment plants, for the wastewater treatment plant, for the materials and supplies, for, from, from pipes, to fittings, to valves, to all that, also awarding city annual maintenance work for HVAC, for plumbing, for electrical, to the contractors who are the responsible low bidders, so if you have any questions, once you come to those resolutions, I'll be happy to address them. And with that, with that, I will conclude my remarks, if you have any questions for me.
Any question for Jacob? Jacob, Monhegan Avenue, the rodeo?
Yes.
When's that gonna be redone?
That rodeo is, is gonna be done as soon as the contractor is done, he's gonna start tomorrow transferring water services from the water main, which was just activated, to the, we just finished installing the water line from Suesy Lane, which is in Fair Oaks, across, we tapped into the line across Monhegan Avenue, through Monhegan Avenue into the psychiatric center, the pressure was tested, the line was pressure tested, disinfected, we just got the bacteria results, the contractor is gonna start now, the line has been activated, we did the connection, when was it, on Friday, so the line is active now, so now we can go back, there's one more line we have to activate, which is to feed, so we, so we can have two 12-inch lines feeding into a 24-inch line, make a long story short, once that's done, which is, that's expected to be done tomorrow, then they're gonna start hooking up the water services from the old line to the new line, the 24-inch line, once that is done, and they're digging, you know, where the main is, which is on Monhegan Avenue, then, after that, they will come in and pave it, so how many days, I don't know, I would say a couple of weeks.
I mean, it's very bumpy.
Yes, I know.
People are driving on the left, they're going over the double yellow and driving on the left side.
Yeah, I conveyed that to the contractor, and he said, "I'm almost done", to be honest with you, he did the foolish mistake, if you recall, we had this problem with him before, and he hired the contractor to come in and mill it and pave it for him, and that was a very nice surface, and then, he said, "Well, it's not to the right depth", so he came and prematurely dug it all up, and paved it again in-house, and that's where the screw-up happened.
Oh, another two weeks?
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping for another two weeks, yes, I'm hoping for another two weeks, he's having a hard time lining up subcontractors in there, because everybody's busy, the asphalt people, this is their prime time, their peak time, so, I told him, if he has any difficulties to get in touch with us, we'll try to help him, finding contractors, so my apologies, I understand, it's very uncomfortable, it's silly the way it was done, it, we realized it after the fact, "What, what did you do that for?".
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Police Chief?
Good evening. I do have a couple things on the agenda this evening, I'll just address some real quick, and see if you have any questions, the first item is a item that I hope that you support, it's to receive two mobile data terminals, they're MDTs, they're car computers, that's what we utilize in the car to issue summons, they get data for information on subjects and calls, that's a grant, $10,098 grant, that would supply us with two new MDTs. Second resolution is to accept $10,475 in a youth bureau grant, this was some leftover money that the youth bureau had, that, based on our activity with the programs that we do, they offered it to us, so we, we'd be happy to utilize that to do some additional services with the youth. In regards to fireworks, as the mayor said, it was a little bit better this year, not a tremendous amount, and it's not for lack of effort at all, we, we did our enforcement and education leading up to going to the stores, making sure nobody was selling it, educating the housing complexes, so on and so forth, we put on additional staff throughout the whole entire weekend, last night, I worked, I left here at 11:30, I was out on the road the whole time, doing the same thing as the officers, running behind houses, sneaking around, trying to find who was doing this, total for the weekend, if we go from July 1st to today, basically, midnight, this morning, we dealt with 103 fireworks calls, last year in that same timeframe, we had 121 fireworks calls, just on the fourth itself, last night, we handled 59 fireworks calls, in comparison to 2021 was 65, our biggest difference this year versus last year is last year we made many more arrests than we did this year, we made a total of 32 arrests last year, this year we made a total of 19, again, not for lack of trying, I felt like it was almost a game going on Crescent, we'd pull on Crescent, after getting called or hearing it, it'd be silent, walking around, we pull off the street, boom, 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 we'd come back around, a police officer, Stige, we used an unmarked car, we had people on foot, and it's just a challenge to find where they're actually coming from. The other thing that we get some kickback from the community is people call us and say, "Hey, I'm seeing fireworks, I'm hearing fireworks", so there's that delay, from the time they see them, to the time they call us, to the time we respond, and then in between all this, we're also handling the other calls that are coming in, you know, domestics, medical calls, they, they don't stop just because the fireworks are going on, so it is a challenging night, I feel that we, we had adequate staff to handle it, it's just a matter of, of the community trying to cooperate with us. Any questions?
Question for the police chief? Alderman Tobin?
Not, not on the fireworks, but the, I don't know if you're ready to comment, is there any, like, guidance for the Supreme Court decision with the carry, concealed carry law, is that, is there any guidance sent to police departments about that, any changes?
We, we get some updates on the changes, basically same thing that goes out in the media, we didn't get anything other than that as of this time, typically, when we do get the law updates through the governor's office, that, there's normally a training that comes with it, from the district attorney's office, just the last round, there's some changes with the ERPO law, the extreme risk protection law, the red flag laws, so we did have a training on that last Tuesday, through the DA's office, they normally dissect the law, and then present it to us in a fashion that we could understand, and how we're gonna be able to utilize it, so being that that new law doesn't go into effect with the carry laws until September 1st, I would hope that we'll have something from now to then.
Okay, thank you.
Criminals are not gonna take a 16-hour training course to get a gun, to purchase a gun, and then use the gun, 'cause they'll buy guns illegal and everything, they only gear it towards civilians, and people that can get a personal mint, that's all. Anything else?
I have nothing, unless you have questions for me.
All right.
Oh, actually, the demonstration, we prepared for that, we, we came across that by accident, honestly, someone forwarded us, that information to us, so we prepared, we made contact with the organizer, explained through the process, she did not wanna go through that process, she wanted to do it on her own, we explained to her the consequences if she did do it without going through the process, we counseled with Alex Smith and the mayor on the whole process as we went through, and prepared as if she was gonna come with a large contingent of people, as she so planned, and it, it wasn't that large, after all, but we made sure she was safe in her travels, and with her purpose, so, and we'll continue to monitor those, those events if they do pop up.
Thank you, chief. All right, Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening. Well, Slayer Field update, the roof is on, the plumbing is roughed in, and the concrete floor was poor today, the Bosse's group started at the Van Duser parking lot, they're gonna help out our maintenance department with some of the extra clearing and landscaping that they wanted to do at that parking lot, still maintaining Little League fields for all of their All-Star Games going on, they have the regular weed whacking and mowing, the main busy, busy part, pools are open, our parks, our playground program, so lots of cleaning and lots of garbage on a daily basis, just do wanna say a huge thank you to John Bianchi and all the maintenance staff, from the pool guys, the part-timers that are in, because those pool bathrooms on hot weekends are trashed, so, it's a hefty, hefty cleanup every single morning, especially Friday, we were 10 people away from capacity at War Memorial Pool, and brought in almost $1,000 in revenue from that pool just for that day, and those bathrooms were horrendous, from the constant use all day, so, that's a tough job in the morning, so, thank you to our maintenance department. Our playground program is open, Amster Park, Sproach Street, Bennett Hill Park, Throw Park, Beatty Hill Park, Jerome Neal Park, Academy Avenue, Davich Park, Maple Hill Park, and David Moore Heights is staffed from 10:30 to 2:30, and the school district is providing lunch for any child up to 18 who is in the park that day, and we also have staff there from 10:30 to 2:30 to play games, board games, sport games, cards with the kids for, during that time. Our Little People Playtime, Spirit Camp, Sports, Sports Camp is underway, again, a huge thank you to the Middletown School District Food Services, actually, our Sports Camp and Spirit Camp at Monhegan Avenue, they are providing a breakfast and a lunch, and the lunch is actually a hot meal that the kids are getting on a daily basis, so that's a very extra added bonus for them, and also, the Little People Playtime is also getting a breakfast and a lunch, provided by the school district also. Like I said, Spro, and War Memorial, that Friday was the crowdedest as War Memorial's been since it opened, so the pools are a lot busier, huge thank you to our lifeguards, Nicole Sarakis, who manages the pools this year, she's doing an amazing job with her staff, Danielle McAvaney, who is running our in-service trainings, and also certified and recertified our guards this year, she's been spot checking and assisting Nicole with the trainings for the guards, and everything is going great so far. Joe Massey can attest to all the 426s that came in for our part-timers, we're about 60-plus part-timers on this summer, and again, just a thank you to all of them, they're doing an amazing job, from the playgrounds to our camp counselors, everyone is doing an awesome job so far. A thank you to Recap this year, they have donated thus far about $6,000 in scholarships for kids to attend our camps, and just nothing would reimburse, we're giving invoice on how much it would cost for how many children they have, and the amount of time that the kids wanna attend camp, we're giving the invoice, Recap is coming back and sending them with a check to pay for camp, so, Recap, a huge thank you to them, because a lot of kids are getting the opportunity to go to camp this summer. And last thing, a big thank you to Kelly Ocasio, who is our keyboard specialist in the office, her job definitely does go unnoticed a lot, but I definitely wanna say thank you, every Monday before camp starts, she's in on the weekends, and getting at least five hours of work to prepare all of our sign-in lists, checkout lists, going through everything, submitting everything to the health department on a weekend basis, so, again, her work goes unnoticed, you're not gonna see her out there, except for, she was flipping hot dogs at the fireworks, but a thank you to Kelly and all of our staff, because this summer is definitely a great start. Any questions?
Question for Rayland? Alderman Massey? Yes, just, just one comment, on the 426s, they should be going to me before they go to that other guy.
I will note that, for sure.
Alderman Witt?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for everything that you, you and your staff are doing, do you have any participation numbers, or anything that you can share, even relative to like last year, I know it was a different world, but any idea that you can share, how many people and how many kids are actually involved in all of these?
Yes, yep, our sports camp this week had 103 participants, as opposed to last year, we were about 75 outdoors, so being indoors is definitely making a difference, like I said before, we're truly lucky to be inside at Monhegan Middle School, having the air conditioning, Spirit Camp has 21 kids, definitely higher than when we were outside, and our Little People Playtime is the four, five, and six, the most challenging age group, they have 33 kids, so, that is a lot of little kids in one area during the day, and then our playgrounds are just drop-ins, but ours, if you ride by during the day, you can see our staff engaging, Contessa is doing an amazing job with teaching the staff, approaching the families and parents, we're making, getting lawn signs made to go in from 10:30 to 2:30, just so the community knows that it's a staff program, and something is going on, and there's opportunities for kids from 10:30 to 2:30 in all our parks.
All right, anymore? Thank you, Rayland. Corporation Council?
I don't have anything prepared unless anybody has any questions for me.
Question for Alex? All right, that was easy. City Clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Any question for Rick? All right. Public hearings and grievances?
Our first public hearing, notices hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible, Common Council Chambers, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a change to the zoning code of the city code regarding the proposed implementation of a business permit program, the complete proposed change to the zoning code is available on the city website, Common Council Clerk's office, City Hall, 16 James Street, room 12, and on the city website.
Okay, if it's time, the public hearing is now open. Anyone from the public? Anyone online?
They have not indicated that they'd like to speak.
All right, any council member? I got a motion to close. So moved. Motion by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Witt, all in favor? Aye. Public hearings closed. Remarks of all of them.
One more public hearing?
One more?
One more.
Two.
We have two, notices hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible, Common Council Chambers, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a change to the zoning code of the city code to require all retail stores to obtain planning board approval in applicable zoning districts without regard to square footage, the complete proposed change to the zoning code is available in the office of the Common Council Clerk, City Hall, 16 James Street, room 12, and on the city website.
All right, public hearing is now open, anyone from the public? All right, any council members? I got a motion to close? So moved. Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green, all in favor? Aye. Public hearings closed. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey? Nothing this evening. Alderman Witt?
Thank you, we have our first ward constituents' meeting next Wednesday, July 13th, at 6 o'clock, here in the council chambers, congratulations, Rayland, again, with the work that everybody's doing, there are a lot of programs also available through the school district that will be starting up soon, so hundreds and hundreds of kids are getting an opportunity that are, and it's being made very easy to do so in terms of finances on both sides, so congratulations. As far as the fireworks go, I, I appreciate the efforts, chief, with everything, I, I guess I was discouraged, because when you were kind enough multiple times to let everybody know the city's position on this, including a social media post, I was stunned at the level of disrespect that you had about that, and people were blatant and they didn't care, and, I don't know, I mean, I, certainly, from where I'm sitting, I'm hearing it all night, and I, but I'm right near the town of Walk Hill border also, too, and, I don't know, it just seems like four days of this, it's, it's, it's too much, and it's, I think people have to look sort of at being good people and good neighbors on top of just having their own fun, because if you look on social media, your neighbors don't necessarily want this either, so, anyway, thank you to everybody for doing what they do, thanks.
Alderman Green?
Thank you, I'll start out with saying that we will have our second ward constituents' meeting here in City Hall on the 11th, Monday, so I hope to see everyone out here, that'll be at 7 PM. Also, you know, with regards to the fireworks, I told myself this year I wouldn't let it get to me, and everyone in my family said that's not true, and they were right, 'cause I expected a little better out of everyone, the city put on an amazing show up at Davich Park, the, the weather didn't keep anyone away, I was up there early, and then, I'm fortunate enough to be able to watch it inside with my family, from where, where I live, so, it was a wonderful show and a wonderful crowd, but, you know, the fireworks didn't end up at, up at Davich Park, and it is, it's blatant disrespect to your neighbors, to the laws of the city, you know, to animals, to veterans, you know, we do our show, it's planned, people know what's gonna happen, but nobody expects it to go off in your backyard at 1:30 PM, or 1:30 AM, excuse me, there were some at 1:30 PM, or even, you know, past 2 o'clock in the morning, which is frankly ridiculous and obscene, so, I do wanna commend the police department, last night, I was out, there was a fire call at Waltz Park, where a piece of city property, regardless of how little, was destroyed by fireworks, so, you know, I drove around after that for a few minutes, and there were police everywhere, and chief, I will say, even I heard fireworks go off, and I was like, "Oh, I know right where that is, you drive right to that area, you can't, you can't see it", so people are doing it, and they know you're around, and it's unfortunate that it has to be that way, so, do better, please, next year, and going forward to the rest of this summer, we don't wanna see what happened unfortunately in Goshen, where a family lost their entire home in, in a matter of less than an hour, all due to fireworks, so, think about it before you act, come out, enjoy what the city provides for you, join in with your neighbors, hope to see you again next year on it, thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you, I wanna thank Maria and her staff, it was a great weekend, I thank Jimmy Starr for being willing to come to Middletown every year, and, and that was a great night, but the fireworks were spectacular, they were non-stop in the park, and it was a good time, and I don't know how you did that, keeping the rain away, but it just cooperated perfectly. And also, thank Ray Lynn and the whole Parks and Rec staff and John Bianchi, and you know, we used to hear, "There's nothing for kids to do in Middletown," it just, you just have to laugh because there's just always so much going on, so I thank them for all the hard work, it doesn't just happen, it takes a lot of planning and a lot of effort and a lot of very dedicated people. As the mayor mentioned, town of Waywayanda, the draft generic environmental impact statement is on Waywayanda's website, and you have until July 13th to submit comments to the planning board. I have mine almost ready to go, and it's, it deserves all the opposition we can give it and make sure that if it's done, it's really done right. And our second ward constituents meeting, Andrew has mentioned, next Monday, July 11th, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
All right, Alden Recsoum?
Good evening. I don't want to repeat what everyone else has already said, but Maria and your staff, and every year, you guys always put together an amazing July 4th weekend, so I know you guys put in a lot of work on that, so my thanks to you for that, Ray Lynn and Rec, summer it's all about Rec, and it's all about what the kids are doing, and you guys do a fantastic job. You know, I drop a me at that pool to work, and those kids all run all over the park, and you guys just do a monumentous task, keeping a very large population of children busy and out of trouble, and I love it. For the business of the third ward, we will be holding our third ward meeting this month, it will be the 4th Tuesday of July, I don't know the exact date off the top of my head. I say that now because I will not be at the next meeting, I'm going to be at a Newark airport getting my kids, so wanted to make sure everyone knew about it, since Paul won't be here to piggyback, but I wish everyone a safe and happy summer, it looks like we're off to a great start.
Alden Tobin?
I'd start off, I thank everybody that was able to vote in the primary, I know this is a crazy year, there's so many different primaries, the next round is August 23rd, we have a congressional primary, I think, at least on Democratic side, and then the general election in November, so there's many different dates to vote this year, so please keep those in mind. I'd like to thank Maria for rocking and rolling in downtown and all the exciting activities that we've been doing, so thank you. And of course, you know, Ray Lynn and the Rec Department for keeping the kids busy, I live in their academy ad park, I see the kids go up, they get their lunch, they get to, you know, read a book, they get to, you know, do some crafts, it's a great opportunity for them to get out of the sun, get out of their house, get exercising, and also get a healthy lunch if they need it, so terrific job. I was able to attend, because I'm a lion, the fishing derby was great, to see kids out on the pond, fishing, sponsor of the city of Middletown. Weather didn't cooperate, there wasn't a ton of fish catched, but kids and the families had a great time, we had a good turnout, and then also as a lion, I was able to go to the high school scholarship award ceremony, it was about $3 million handed out to the scholars, it was a bright bunch of kids, and you know, really kind of made me feel good about the future of Middletown, all these great kids coming out of our high school, and so that was great to see. And we didn't have a constituent meeting this month because it was the first Saturday of the month, the holiday, it was a holiday weekend, but our next meeting is August 6th at 10 AM, Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey accepting a grant for $10,098 for the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, seconded by Alden Witt. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt accepting a grant for $10,475 from the Orange County Youth Bureau.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alden Recsoum, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson? I'm sorry, Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green authorizing the submission of the 2022 CDGB action plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing the submission of a consolidated funding application for roof replacements at the Paramount Theater.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon authorizing the submission of a consolidated funding application for the creation of a strategic plan for the Middletown Community Campus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing the use of $750,000 in additional ARPA funds for the ONW project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing a budget transfer in the amount of $800,000 for the ONW station project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Witt, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt accepting a $2,000 donation for the Middletown Little League for park improvements.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Aldman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green accepting a $110 donation from the CSEA Local 917 to fund summer camp scholarships.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner establishing a budget account line for the state touring route funding.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.